Meeting, which I guess probably won't be as short as the extraordinary meeting that we had very recently. Do we have any members of the public or anybody else wishing to talk to us?
No.
No? Okay, we'll move straight in then with apologies for absence. I think we all know that Paul's not going to be here. Any others?
From Buckinghamshire.
Didn't, you're very quiet Nina.
Sorry, councillor Warren White from Buckinghamshire Council.
Okay, thanks for that. Any declarations of interest?
No.
No declare as we go if anything comes up. The minutes of the last meeting firstly then for the Monday, the 4th of January meeting. Everybody happy with them? Yes, Robin?
Through you chairman, just to make an observation. There was a very unuseful comic made about our precept, which was Buckinghamshire Council's meeting, which rather missed the point that many of the reasons our precept is what our precept is, is because of the things we've took on like Torres information, public toilets, disability, funding the fringe festival that used to be which would be a festival fortnight. I think it wasn't very useful. I think people should go and watch that, but I did mention this, my concerns to the town clerk, but I do believe for you chairman that when we draft our press release on the precept, I think we need to reflect the straightforward situation of why we are where we are. And we do much more than anybody else and.
Yeah, hold on Robin, we're talking about the accuracy of the minutes. Are we happy with that?
The minutes are there and I mentioned it because the budget within the minutes and that's why I mentioned it chairman.
Right, okay, that is, that is a fair point. We have taken on a lot of stuff which were dumped on us by others. Some of it is some years old now. At one time we did have a precept item which mentioned that. We agreed three or four years ago to sort of drop that and meld everything into our own precept, but it is worth issuing the reminder. So Paul could note that when we come to doing some publicity about it. Thanks for that. Now, if everybody's happy with the 4th of January minutes, we'll move on to the 18th of February extraordinary meeting minutes. And there are a couple of items there. On page two, the second table of those receiving a reduced grant from what they applied for repeats a couple from the previous table. So that should really be, they should both be deleted. That's the ones I refer to, the angling club and the tennis club grants.
Agreed.
Hello Ruth. You're on mute.
Sorry, that was my amendment on the declarations that I'm a member of the.
Yes, I was gonna come to that. I've made a note of it, yeah. So if we're agreed, we can delete the two lower items on the second table, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, and now Ruth, your point about PCC membership?
Yeah, I declared an interest as a member of St Peter and St Paul's PCC. Because I know that at some other meetings, you know, there's been discussion about whether you have to declare it as a member of the church and or whether it's the PCC and it's the PCC that I'm a member of. And I understand that Paul Hirons is as well.
So can we reflect that in the final version then Nina?
Thank you.
Councillor Stutbroe.
Just briefly chairman, did I get into the meeting or had the meeting finished by the time I got into?
It actually had finished at the time you clicked in.
That's okay chairman, thank you.
Righty ho. Move on then to the minutes of the communications strategy group. Just to receive those draft minutes. Which I guess we have. And can we move on to the action report then? And there's one item on the agenda and the other items, the other three items have got some forward dates. It might be as well to include there's an ongoing action on the action report. To include the matter about our emergency plan and that as well, because it got missed off this one for which I apologize.
The climate emergency.
Plus one. Okay, we'll move on to the budgets then. Right, now we've got appendix B to start with. Do you need me to go through it page by page? Or are you happy with just taking it as it is? Yeah, I'm assuming you're all content with that then. There's nobody signifying that they want to talk. Okay. Move on to the purchase ledger invoice listing.
Robin had a hand up then.
Yeah, he put it down again.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Because the chairman said what I was gonna say, but I was content.
Okay, thanks. Move on to the purchase ledger invoice listing, reams of stuff what's being paid. Everybody happy with that? Okay. Now move on to the detailed income and expenditure on budget headings, by budget headings. I propose to go through these a page at a time as normal, just just shout out rather than raise your hand because I'm reading all this from a different screen to the ones you're appearing on and the eyes are funny, but they're not that funny. So page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five. Page six. Page seven. Page eight. Page nine. Page 10. Page 11. Page 12. And now on to the summary income and expenditure by budget heading. Do the same thing page at a time. Page one. Page two. Page three. That's it. Everybody content with them?
Yes.
Yep.
Lovely. We'll move on then to discuss the revised budget forecast. Paul, do you want to say anything about this?
Just to note, this is very similar to the last revised budget forecast and the forecast the precept report was based on. I think it's dropped by about £3,000. Obviously, we're getting much closer to the end of the financial year, so hopefully it's more increasingly accurate. Happy to take questions.
Are there any questions? Councillor Stutbroe.
Just to ask the town clerk, looking at these figures, they are drifting back towards where we thought we would get. It's his aspirations. Is there any big shock that he knows of that things that we've got to come? You know, out of this because it looks, some of the reds and some of the blacks are sort of drifting towards each other now. A lot better than we were earlier in the year. Did you see any big shocks coming up?
No, if we have any big shocks, they'll be a surprise to me.
Well, that's a good.
He shouldn't say that.
No, but what I meant is it, there's nothing that since we've done these and they are moving together. But I thank you for the time that you put into this because it's through this committee and every committee, you have been an accountant for where we were and it's been a moving feat. So I think we should thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks very much. Any other queries?
Yeah.
Thank you Howard.
Occupational health. That's seen a big change from 1,231 to 67.
Which page is it Howard?
Right at the top.
Yeah, it's right at the top or the first page.
Yeah, so to be honest, as earlier in the year, I assumed that we would have reasons to spend money on occupational health, which I because generally it's something that comes up. But there isn't anything coming up. So it was just a figure I'd normally assume we would have to spend, but no, I'm assuming we won't have to.
Right, okay.
Is it possible that we might have to spend some when things start to be moving back to normal? Or when we are talking some, you know, the whole of the Covid lockdown and all the rest of it, working from home. All that entails, particularly of those with children and then coming back into an office, what that entails. Do you think that there might be a need for something then perhaps?
Possibly, although that that would obviously be after the end of this financial year, so that'd be next year. And we do have the confidential item at the end of the agenda to talk about staffing when those kinds of things will come up.
Yeah, okay. It's really, I raise it really as a cautionary thing and not just to assume that everything's going to snap back to normal.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on that? We accept that. Thanks for the work that goes into it then.
Yeah, I agree.
Righty ho, we'll move on then to item seven, the equality and diversity lead officer. Paul, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, thank you. So this is a recommendation that came out of the diversity group, which has made some interim recommendations, they're not their final recommendations. That the council should have a clearly identified lead for according diversity. I propose that that should be me. Because A, it's kind of my overall responsibility anyway. And also I do have responsibility around culture for the organisation and the office. But obviously that being the case, it would need to be something which was monitorable and there was some evidence that I'd done something rather than just sticking it on my job description.
I agree. Okay, Lisa?
Yeah, just happy to go with recommendation chairman.
Fine, everyone in content with that. Now Robin?
Yeah.
Would you, through you chairman, you did you bringing back a report in the early year of the new council on how you see that going forward? Because I think that's, it's too early to say that because we've just, if we, this is agreed and we have, we take it forward, just an early report on how you see it in the setting of the town council, because obviously the town council setting is not the same as Buckinghamshire council. And it will be larger than any smaller parish. So I think how you set those priorities will probably be a third of the way to what Buckinghamshire council would be, but not all the way. We don't have those what I call inline responsibilities of education, children and such like, though we do have interactions with the public, we do provide services. And we need to make sure that obviously our policy of employment has always been equality minded, so. But we just need an early report. Would that be appropriate in the new council where you feel you've got to, I think it's that then it would bring the subject to light within that authority.
I think I'll find that's covered in the next item.
Well, which case I'm psychic then chairman.
Anything else on the, on this particular paper? No, we'll move on then to the equality and diversity policy. It's wrongly headed, but that's what it, what it's about. Paul again?
Yeah, thank you. So on the policy, firstly, the diversity group correctly identified that it hadn't actually been altered for several years. Looking at it, I think the policy was put together shortly after the equality duty came in. And so it meets the most recent equality legislation. The quality group's question really was that the quality diversity policy says the council will work. It's committed to valuing diversity of the community and promoting equality. It doesn't actually say how we'll do that. It actually just talks about HR. It doesn't talk about what we're doing in the wider community. So I've added some details on, without being too specific, saying that the council will be active and proactive in its work to promote diversity within the wider community and its service delivery. And that we'll look at that every year. So with the may, with the may list that we go through every year, that we'll include it in that list. But I would suggest this year possibly come the autumn, it might be a suitable agenda item as well for new councillors to have a bit more of a stab at in terms of the wider equality and diversity approach. Obviously, new councillors will have a view on what they want to prioritise on.
One, Robin?
Thank you chairman. Obviously, one of the things where we are more at face with the public is going to be our calendar of events. I think it would be worth having a look at that via the diversity means is sense that our kind of events do meet those requirements fairly accurately, but I do think if there's anything that we need to do via the way of an event or something to be sure that we're covering all that, I think it'd be useful to have something on a future agenda to, if we feel as a community of councils that we need to put some diversity event on. What that will be, I'm not going to draw the prior parameters up now. I just asked that maybe some report could come to a future events committee so that we could look at that and start looking at where we would want to be with it. The town's changing, the community is evolving. And we need to make sure that we reflect all those different families and different communities which are moving into Buckingham. And maybe some event would be appropriate. I don't want to plan the event tonight. I just think it'd be useful for officers to bring something to events to take that forward chairman.
Yeah, I tend to agree. I think all the committees are sort of reviewing at various stages, particularly where they're, they're meeting outside groups and all the rest of that. Yep. Anybody else? Any comments? We're happy with all of that then? Yep, okay, great. Move on to item nine then, the fees and charges. Paul again?
Thank you chair. So just to say, we could have added a bit more clarity to this report. The internal auditor requested that we have a single fees and charges report every year. So that's what this is for the first time. Next year, we'll put this through each of the committees through the budget cycle and then go to precept with an addition to the precept report giving fees and charges for the year. At the moment, this report does include items for TCE and environment committees. But it doesn't recommend any changes, so the, all the figures there that you've got have already been agreed by those two committees. So we're not, we're not recommending to change things that haven't been discussed elsewhere that should have been. The only change in this report is to increase the cost of hiring the chamber, which does sit under the resources committee.
Thank you for that, Robin.
Just so I'm very happy with what Claire done on the market bits for events. She talked it through with me. Fully her rationale with that. And as for the events committee, the charges and stuff, I, you know, I thank her for that time and I and it's obvious it comes here because it could have go to the other committee because it had been and I thank her for her time on that.
Right, okay, John?
Yeah, I obviously accepted they'd been through committee already, but I looking at the cemetery related fees, they seem to have gone up quite a lot. And I can't remember, and I'm fully accept it's my fault, but I can't remember agreeing to an increase, for example, with a single plot from £470 to £943, which seems like a dramatic increase. Could, could the town clerk or somebody else refresh my memory please as to why it's gone up so much?
Yes, I was going to ask that as well. They seem to have doubled.
Oh, I there's a column heading missing. So the left-hand column, Lee's not here to double crack me on this, the left-hand column is for Buckingham residents and the right-hand column, I believe, is for non-Buckingham residents.
Oh, that makes it a lot clearer.
Can we bring in the deputy issues waving frantically?
Yeah, I have to apologise. There's been, if you look at the top of that page, the there's been a formatting error when it's, it's gone into one document unfortunately. So the column titles are underneath Buckingham Town Council.
So, so what Paul has just said, that the middle column relates to residents and the right-hand column relates to others is correct, is it?
That's correct, yeah. I'm sorry, it's obviously.
That is, that is more in keeping with the numbers of I recall. Anyway, Robin?
To reassure John, I do remember us talking about it. I do remember the chair taking it through it and it was a it was many other things on that long meeting, but we did discuss it and we did discuss it very much in the lines as Claire described. So be reassured, it was discussed. Now the clarity's there. That makes a huge difference to the way you're looking at it, I would believe.
Thank you Howard.
On the roundabouts, I just wondered why 1.5% uplift is actually more than a 2.5, 2.6% uplift. I think some of them might be around the wrong way. Some.
Sorry?
I'm just scrolling.
Page one.
Yeah, so in 20, when we, last year when we did the increase, so from at the start of the year 2020 to 21, there was a 2.6% RPI because that's what we used when we set the precept in January 2020. Whereas this year, when we set the precept in January 21 for 2021-22, we use the 1.5% uplift. Are you saying that's correct, but the numbers don't add up?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just one, it I can't tell really what the original, it would depend on the baseline. But as I read it, a one half percent uplift, it should come out as less than a 2.6% uplift.
No, the 2.6 uplift is included in that figure. Then we uplift by 100, 1.5% and that gives us the right-hand.
I see what you mean, yeah. Okay then, yeah.
But I accept it, it could be, could be clarified perhaps. Well, it could be clarified.
Well, Paul's just done this, but.
Any other comments, Robin?
Just to make a comment, I remember when councillor Ruth Neil tried to get us to take these on for many years. It took many years just to get to the point of having a roundabout. And it looks like the council has actually done a good job of managing them. And then shortly after we started doing this, Buckinghamshire County Council decided they wanted to manage roundabouts as well. But we managed the first ones in Buckingham and I think in the round, I think it's been quite a success. And we showed them how to manage roundabouts and now they're trying to extract an income from roundabouts the same. But it'd be nice to have a further conversation with them about the new roundabout at Tindrit Row, at Rowde Estate and because that's a roundabout, the next one along. And what their long-term ambition is for that roundabout, because it seems perfectly logical that it's taking in with all the other town roundabouts, doesn't it? As it's a major new roundabout and they've just planted the trees on it, I know this recently. So could I ask for you chairman, the town clerk, ask them what their intentions are with that roundabout? Because I'd like to propose that we offer to take that one over.
Paul, any comment?
I'm happy to have it at the go. We have requests in the past and I think we put it on the original request of things to take on through the updated devolution agreement and we were told it wasn't on offer. But new councils coming in, let's keep asking that question.
Right, does that include the, have we got the Tesco roundabout or not? Just refresh my memory.
We have.
We have?
Yeah.
Okay, so the Tindrit one is the only one outstanding.
Yes.
Well then, then, then let's try and get a full bag, absolutely, yeah. Everybody agreed with that? Anything else on that? I noticed a great long list of bits of paper which cost £10 each. I won't be making a collection.
Just on the cemetery charges, my understanding is they haven't, they haven't gone up because I queried why. It hadn't gone through environment, but the town clerk reassured me that they are the same. They haven't increased.
Well, this is as, as it was agreed at the, agreed at the precept meeting, so environment agreed that to go through, so.
Yeah.
You happy with that Ruth?
Yeah.
We happy to move on?
Yep.
To item 10 on the agenda, the variational grant request for Lace Hill. There is a paper, I think, appendix C. I can't see a lot of, lot of problem with this as it's written. Paul, what observations have you got?
No, absolutely. I think they've made a reasonable request. They've just not been able to spend the money as planned. And they're obviously doing a high-profile, generally well-received campaign at the moment.
Yeah, good. Ruth?
Me, did you say?
I said Ruth.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I want to fully support you because I think it's it's such a wonderful campaign and it's so important to keep playing fields clear of dog poo. And there's a playing field very close to where I live that dog owners continue to exercise their dogs. Even though there's a bit of space right next to it that dogs are free to roam on. So all the best to Lace Hill people.
Okay, Robin?
I think it's great that they're taking some ownership of their estate and it's great that they're trying to move this forward. I have watched the campaign. People have a responsibility, you have a dog and they're trying to remind them of that. And I think it's a good thing to do. And as they stay in their paper, they're not likely to be meeting because of Covid for very soon. So we may not get an uplift of meetings, but an uplift of detriment on the pavement through this unless to go because it's not pleasant, is it? And I don't see any problem with it at all.
Good, okay, so we're all, John?
Yeah, I just want to add, I think this is a great campaign that they're embarking upon. Obviously, I agree with them using their money in a different kind of way to fit with what's been happening. A lot more people have got pets since lockdown started. I think a whole heap of reasons as to why this is such a good campaign. And I think it really shows the rest of Buckingham what can be done with a powerful residents association and you know, whatever we should be doing maps as the town council, you know, we could be encouraging similar outfits. You know, in Linden, Page Hill, Badgers and elsewhere. I mean, there are lots of quite discreet communities within our town that have a, that have an identity. And if there are ways in which we as a town council could encourage that, similar to what they've got up in Lace Hill. That's all for the good. I think it's, it's great. It's great to see this activity. So all power to their elbows. And little pickers.
Thank you. I think this is worth a press release of residents taking possession of problems on their estate. Ending up with, what about the other estates? Would you be interested in doing this? That's getting a few thumbs up. Robin, then Lisa?
Just to say, it's also worth noting, having worked with them for a number of years, the residents association and late councillor, I should use to attend as a town councillor. They've done a pretty formidable job there in the sense that we all know the issues with the management company and we worked with them on the slope with the disability access. They've been quite a success and this shows again good public community action. Why would say be guarded? The amount of hours that they've put into that residents association are huge. At the moment, then they're trying to get planning matters put right, which I'm working with and with. There's a lot of work in this, but I do think it's worth asking if anyone did. They could then apply for grants for similar schemes in their area. So I think it's a good idea. But don't think being a residents association has no work to do. From what I can see of the Lace Hill residents association. They work tirelessly to defend their slot. So and anybody wishes to, when it comes out of Covid, join that residents association, I'm sure they make you welcome, as I say, I tend myself.
Okay, thank you Lisa.
Thanks Mike. Linden Village does have a residents association. But I would welcome like any input and help to go along with like the press release as in like explain where people could go, like what sort of help is available out there, that kind of thing. Like on Linden Village, we don't have anywhere to meet or the only alternative would be to apply to Borton Centre, which is just ridiculous fees. So if that could be in with the press release, that'd be really handy, I think.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? So are we agreed then that yes, they can use the money for the purpose stated in the paper? And that we issue a press release applauding what they're doing and suggesting gently that other estates might like, might like to take a similar initiative? Yeah? Okay, we'll move on to the heady delights of CCLA investments then, item 11. And I have to say that thin grey writing on white paper doesn't transmit too well electronically. On my high contrast stuff. But Paul, do you want to say something about this?
Thank you chair. Yeah, so you might remember we transferred a lot of the money from the council's general reserve to CCLA a little while ago. CCLA put money in a range of banks, so it's safer than being in one, especially in the current financial context. There's an advice note there from them in terms of why they would say they're doing the best they can. In the last month, we had a report from them, we had a return of £30 on £600,000 for the month, which is an interest rate of 0.0389. I can confidently say that. I can confidently say that I can't find any better way of investing the council's money at the moment that doesn't come with additional risk, and I wouldn't suggest that now's the time to be taking additional risk.
Thank you, Lisa.
I think Robin had his hand up first.
I've called you.
Sorry, thank you, Mike. The only thing is that the, the last page, it says on disclosure that this document is a financial promotion. So I think we need to make sure that we understand that, that this is promotional material, and it says it is not, it's, it doesn't constitute a professional finance investment or professional advice, so it is promotional material. That's the only kind of caveat that I would want members to appreciate.
Yeah, yes, but we are only asked to receive a note, aren't we?
Yeah.
Robin?
We haven't got anywhere near the funds that Buckinghamshire council has to invest, but at some point in the future when markets moved upwards, I do think we need to start in line with our environmental policies that we've got in the council. You start looking at whether we, we invest our money equity and environmentally friendly. Now, this is at the stage with this decision, but I do think, I'd like to propose that we look at that to see going forward whether that's something the council would like to do.
Well, if I can interrupt you, Robin, that, that's for a future agenda item, what we're asked to do is to receive and note this, this particular paper. I'm not disagreeing with you, but that is something that we, we bring forward into the future.
I only note, Chairman, that you can probably get a quicker return, some people tell me on, on, on premium bonds now than you do invested money. But that's, that isn't perhaps what we should be doing with council money, they're putting it in premium bond.
Six hundred thousand in, in, uh, premium bonds, yeah, I like that, I do. Okay, everybody noted that then?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll move on to Chair's announcements. It'll take too long, because there aren't any. The, the next meeting is the twenty-sixth of April. We all know that. Now we'll exclude the public and press and.